Good evening and welcome to the October 9th meeting of the Town Council. We'll begin the meeting this evening with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We ask that you keep in mind our servicemen and women around the globe as well as our first responders. Pursuant to mass general law, this meeting is being taped and I have to ask if anyone else is in the audience that is taping or recording the meeting. Seeing none, moving on to public comments. Mr. Florence, any registered? Okay. Any council comments this evening? Okay. Well, Ms. Menard, Town Manager's report is next.
Okay. So, this is a pretty short report, but trust me, it isn't because I've been just sitting around. I've been spending a lot of time in the last, actually, the last more than a couple of weeks documenting a lot of our union contracts, employment contracts, making some substantive changes to what we've inherited to make them more logical and appropriate. In fact, Carolyn has been a big questioner of things that are in the exempt employees contract, and as we looked at it, it's kind of what we had before. And I said, "Well, yeah, I guess I don't know what that would be." She's really kept me on task with doing a lot of logical changes that will be a more accurate exempt employees contract across the board. So, that's really what I've been doing a lot of, and I established an annual review process with each department head on their anniversary will be getting reviewed. And because I have monthly meetings with them, we address things, whether it's good or bad, on a monthly basis rather than six months, which is what it said in the contract before. So, it's really a constant flow of information back and forth on both sides. Sometimes they're not happy with me, and they tell me something that they're not happy with. So, it goes both ways, and I think it's a good communication path for all of us. Since we last met, I received notification, official notification, that the town attorney heard from Hamden's town attorney that the Hamden Board of Selectmen discussed East Long Meadow's proposal to host a dispatch facility. They are willing, and this is quoted, "They are willing to continue negotiating the original plan of the dispatch facility in Hamden and do not wish to pursue a facility in East Long Meadow." I've asked Attorney Menard to ask their attorney for some more detail on what was, what they didn't like about the proposed agreement, and I haven't heard anything back from them. Also relating to civilian dispatch, there, the, I think we set up for next week, the appointments for dispatch director interviews, and we have begun taking applications for civilian dispatchers, just the day-to-day dispatchers, that we want the director on board to facilitate those interviews and create the department that that person wants to see. So, that's going. Reminder that the flu clinic will be held tomorrow. The portion of it that will be at the town hall parking lot is from 2:00 to 6:00. And get there early because there were lots of people last year. So, I have tickets for the Veterans Memorial Committee spaghetti dinner. Kathy already has hers. And I also have envelopes for donations to the committee. So, if anybody's interested, you're welcome to see me, and I've got tickets for you. I will be there. I'm hoping they'll get, I'm sure they'll get a good turnout. There have been a few changes on the Historical Commission. However, the Commission continues to look forward to having an active role in the 1/25 anniversary celebration. I've connected with almost all the remaining members of the Commission, and there's a lot of, a lot of stories out there. Everybody be cautious as to what you believe. Senator Lesser's office informed me that the senator is waiting for a grant for the police station to be addressed by the governor. So, we're still waiting on that. You should have all received an invitation from Senator Lesser's office about a meeting with his state senate district on October 22nd at 3:00 PM at the Long Meadow High School. If you've already responded directly to Senator Lesser, can certainly do that, or you can tell me, and I'll gather the responses and tell them all at once. It's really just, it sounds like a forum to just, he'll update us on legislation that he thinks he's going to be putting in, what happened at the end of last year, and anything that we would like to talk to our state senator about. I'll be out of the office next Monday through Wednesday, October 15th to 17th, but as always, I'm available by phone. I also wanted to comment, and it was, I couldn't put it on here because I didn't know if it was going to be a spectacular event or really a kind of embarrassment. We had a wonderful, wonderful veterans event Sunday, and it was pretty well-attended. There were, how many vendors, Carolyn?
Twenty-seven vendors.
About 25?
Twenty-seven vendors.
It was, Heritage Park was full, and we had a lot of staff there. Carolyn was instrumental in putting a lot of it together. It was a committee of a lot of people. We all worked hard to make this an event to be proud of for East Long Meadow, but more importantly, a resource day for veterans, and it truly was. I've even gotten emails this weekend, right after, people that had gone to the event and said what a great event it was, and next year could we do this instead of that? And so, it was really awesome. So, thank you to the whole committee for all the work that they did. It was, it was well-done and well-attended and well-appreciated.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have one. What vacancies are there for boards at the current moment, just so that we can let the public know if anyone's interested in coming forward and volunteering?
I can, I'll do an email, and I'll put it in my next report, a little sheet, because there, there's a, there's a lot of boards and commissions. So, I'll see, I think Planning, School Board, all the big ones are set for now. It's more like Historical. Conservation, I think, has an opening. Recreation, they want to come from, I think they have nine members, and they want to come down to five or seven. So, there's, I'll do some checking, because it comes and goes.
Anything else? Okay. On number six, pool of minutes in your packet, you have, we have two sets of meetings, minutes to accept tonight. The first is the September 11th, 2018 minutes. Take a look at those quickly, and if there are no changes or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to accept them.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The September 11 minutes are approved. Next are the meeting minutes for September 25th. Those are in your packet as well.
Motion to accept the overtime minutes of September 25th.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those minutes are approved. Thank you. Under number seven, Communications, Correspondence, and Announcements, the Planning Matters Subcommittee Appointments. On the same topic of committees, the council as well has some committees. We, this year, hope to be able to define the committees into standing committees, which would be those that meet more, more than not on a somewhat regular basis, certainly as the need arises. And we're hoping to identify those as the Planning Matters Standing Committee, as well as the, rather than, say, Budget or Capital Plan, we'd like to call that the Financial Matters Standing Committee. At the current time, we have four ad hoc committees, and by their definition, they meet when the specific need arises, but it's usually for a particular structured amount of time. Those would be the Licensing Matters Subcommittee, the General Bylaws, excuse me, Ad hoc Committee, the Communication Matters Committee, which has been known up until now as the social media, but, and Counselor Anderson unfortunately is not here to address that a little bit, but we're thinking that Communications is a more appropriate title for that because it deals with a lot more than just social media. And finally, the Town Manager Performance Evaluation Committee. That is the long and short of the type of committees that the council will have in force, and should a particular topic or event arise that necessitates the creation of another ad hoc committee down the road, well, the council has that opportunity to create that if necessary. So, on that topic, the Planning Matters Subcommittee was established last year to work, to more or less distill the information that was coming from recommendations and the backdrop of information from the Planning Board as it relates to the business and coming back to the council. So, according to our bylaws, I mean, our Town Council rules, that committee needs to be, a reach committee needs to be reappointed yearly. So, because there will be a number of important topics that have been referred in the last 60 days to the Planning Board, I have reappointed those members of the committee, of the standing committee, and they are Counselors Anderson, Kane, O'Connor, and community members Marilyn Richards and Ralph Page. And they are free to begin their work as the need might arise following the Planning Board work with the most recent zoning requests. In your packet, the spirit of the types of committees and how to retitle them, I've included proposed language. It's more or less looking at Rule 11 in the council rules, and right now, it's really just a reordering of the information that's presently in the council rules. You'll see by color and strikeout what I would propose to do there. And I would ask that you take a look at that at some time over the next week, couple of weeks, and it will come back for actual adoption probably early November. I'm certain we have a lot on the next agenda, the next meeting's agenda by way of public hearing. So, I would ask that you have some time to pre-read that for discussion. As well as, and I will say this again at the next meeting, and also by email, counselors who wish to serve on any of those committees should, please send me an email so that we can begin making appointments to those committees. It's always prudent on these committees to have someone serve as an, be available as an alternate in the event some, a member of the committee, particularly from the council, is not able to attend. So, if you have an interest in being an alternate for the Planning Matters Subcommittee, please just send me an email. Any questions thus far? Okay. Orders of the day, Licensing Matters. Three one-day liquor licenses for St. Luke's Greek Orthodox Church for October 12th, 13th, and 14th later this week for the Taste of Greece event. Is the applicant in the audience?
Good to know.
What is the council's pleasure? We've made it a matter of our business that we would expect the petitioner or the applicant to be present for passage of, or consideration of whatever might be before us.
Through the chair, I can just add, I've had brief conversations, and I don't think this event's going to be any different than it has been for the last, I don't want to, I don't know how far back they go, but let's just say numerous years. So, if there aren't any comments, I'd entertain a motion to approve a three-day, one-day liquor, three one-day liquor licenses, waiving the fees for St. Luke's Greek Orthodox Church for the 12th, 13th, and 14th, as you stated, for 2018 for the Taste of Greece event.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the three one-day liquor licenses for St. Luke's Greek Orthodox Church for October 12th, 13th, and 14th, please say aye.
Aye.
The licenses are approved. Financial Matters. Discussion of funding from the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the feasibility study and initial schematic design for the Meadowbrook Elementary School roof project. That's a mouthful. Mr. Smith and Mr. Ficero.
Well, we're just here to keep you current on our progress with the Meadowbrook Elementary School Roof Project, because we'll be coming back here October 23rd for a formal vote. So, we thought best to kind of keep you updated where we are and what we actually will be needed on that vote for October 23rd. So, I'll turn to Mr. Smith, who has all the details.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss this with all of you. So, the roof project at Meadowbrook is our second accelerated repair project through the Mass School Building Authority. First one is hopefully going to be completed at the end of October, and that's the Windows and Doors renovation project. If you haven't had a chance to get up to Meadowbrook, it's looking really good. It's transforming into a 21st century school right before our eyes, at least on the exterior. And then the roof would be the second part of that project. We resubmitted, if you remember, last year. Probably was in January, I came before the Town Council and sought your approval to submit another statement of interest for the accelerated repair program. That was for the roof. We were approved. And similar to the Windows and Doors project, the first item in terms of appropriation from the town is for the schematic design. So, that, through our estimation, is going to be somewhere around $122,000 for the schematic design, of which, once we start spending, we will get 55% reimbursement on that. So, similar to the Windows and Doors project, although I don't have the official document in hand, talking to our liaison at the Mass School Building Authority, he had indicated that it was okay to say that for this accelerated repair project, we would be getting 55% reimbursement.
That's excellent.
So, that's, it is excellent. It's exciting. Hopefully, that is sort of a harbinger of good things to come with maybe the core project for the high school, but I don't want to get too far ahead of myself. Hello, Mrs. Menard. How are you?
Sorry. Good. How are you?
So, once we go on the 23rd, hopefully have a vote to appropriate the 122,000, then we would work through schematic design. That's both preliminary drawings and then estimating all aspects and parts of the total project. Then we submit all of that back to the Mass School Building Authority. They approve hopefully at their February meeting, and we would then bring that number, the total project number, back for appropriation here somewhere between February and March if everything goes well.
Good question to the chair. Did you say the, the drawing of the schematic for a flat roof is going to be $122,000?
So, they do both the engineering and all the drawings, and we're probably far above what we need, but we don't want to be under what we might need. So, what we did was we took our estimation, estimate for the full cost of the project, went 25%, which covers all of their engineering and drawing, and then went 25% of that.
For a flat roof replacement? I guess I'm having a trouble understanding what they could, how many drawings they could actually make for $122,000.
I'm just going off sort of their formula and our experience with Windows and Doors.
One big roof.
Yeah. Is it gold-plated? No. So, okay. And again, you know, I know this is a requirement. It's not, you're not, it's not an option for you to go draw your own on a napkin.
Right.
But my 84-year-old father, who's a lifelong roofer, could have done it for free, but that's not allowed. So, I just, I'm shocked at, they're not designing a new building, they're replacing an existing flat roof.
Right.
Wow. Okay.
I believe the key word you said was engineered drawings, too.
Right.
So, the engineering that goes behind them, and actually to have an architect stamp those drawings is a big part of the cost.
Absolutely.
It's not just the drawing on paper, it's what goes behind it. So, you would have paid, if you didn't pay all that fee to the person that actually drew the plan, you would have been paying the remainder to another engineering firm to draw them and stamp them to make it happen. So, hopefully that eases the pain a little bit.
55% doesn't.
That is extraordinarily helpful.
What happens is when the schematic design money is appropriated, that also allows the Mass School Building Authority to assign us a engineering or architectural firm, as well as an owner-project manager. And what I've found in working through the Windows and Doors renovation project, our owner-project managers, the Vertex Company, they've been fantastic. So, they will look at all these steps in detail, and if, if they feel that something's being overcharged, it goes back, it's really quite impressive what they do. But we can't go it alone and be in the MSBA system. They will assign us the owner-project manager, and they will assign us the architectural firm.
And so far with our Windows and Doors project, both schematic design and the total project came in less than what our original estimates were for both. So, if that gives you any comfort at all.
We're chipping away. How would you? 55% or less than 122, you're good.
Yeah. Still struggling with it. But, yeah. Okay. I move on.
So, Mr. Smith, our understanding is that you'll be back on the 23rd.
Yes.
With the hope, Sarah, that free cash will be certified by then?
Yes. I hope it will be certified by the end of this week, but we wanted to come in and answer any questions, just in case I'm not here.
The 23rd, she's likely not going to be here.
Thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
That is entirely understood. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll see you in another two weeks.
Thank you. Always a pleasure. It is. It's a replacement. It's not a roof.
Under Financial Matters 8B, number two, discussion of the Five Years Capital Plan. We left that on this agenda in the event there were further questions, but we know that you've, Denise, you've directed department heads to...
We've already started getting capital plans.
Gathered capital plan requests into you.
Right.
So, I'm sure that projection will be altered a little bit?
Oh, yes, definitely. And we, I actually haven't even shared with Sarah, but I think you and I talked about it Friday, that I'm looking at doing a capital plan committee. I can, under the charter, I can also establish committees, and that's one that I think, after doing this for two years, the first year was really, I think I was still interim for a lot of it, and the second year was really just, I understood the budget, but didn't have the, you know, everything together to be able to say, "Okay, here's how we can improve it," and I think that would improve it. So, I'm looking for that. So, that would be a committee with vacancies, actually.
There you go.
Roofers want it.
Actually, that's...
Actually, I know.
Where I came from, that's exactly how I command the capital committee, was people of different trades, so that they would know. When you're talking about repairing vehicles or replacing vehicles, you had somebody that had history on that. When you talked about the buildings and how to repair or replace or whatever, you had somebody that had that kind of specialty, and then somebody that knows finance. Both Sarah and I would be on the committee, of course, but it would be something that I think we could use a couple of, or a few laypeople that would be able to help us with that.
Good.
Good enough.
Any other questions? Okay. Then we'll look to see that back down the road. Nothing under old business tonight, Mr. Florence?
Nothing.
Okay. New business, the vote of the council to designate early voting polling place.
Yes. Based on our fall conference we had in Springfield a couple of weeks ago, and recommendation the Secretary of State's office, they recommend if early voting cannot happen at your town hall, please get a vote of the council in a secondary place. And even though the library community room is attached to the town hall, they still recommend you to get a vote of the council for approval to hold it in the library community room. So, I came here tonight just to ask you for that motion and that vote to officially hold it in the library community room.
And with it being cited there, you're going to assign some of our poll election workers to stay with it during the day?
Exactly. Right now, we're in the process of the logistics, working with our Pat Henry, our registrar chair, to, you know, just, you know how many people are going to come in, just the logistical flow of the 10 days, which begins on October 22nd. The schedule of the early voting hours is on the website and starting to get posted throughout town.
Good.
Okay. I'd like to propose a motion to approve East Long Meadow Public Library Community Room as the designated early voting poll location for the town for the November 6 state election.
Second. But I just have one question for Tom. Can we do that for every early election instead of just saying it's the 6th?
What's that?
Can we do that, just designated as a location for every early election instead of just doing it for the 6th?
Does it have to be?
Does it have to be, like, specific to the next election, or can we just say that's our early voting location?
We could do that. That's also, if you wanted, just, you know, and I can work with the library director to make sure that's where it's always going to be.
Right. I mean, then we don't have to do it every time. We've already proved it to be in there, and for every time we do early voting, they can go there.
Instead of coming every two years.
Instead of coming every two years to redo the vote.
And it makes it predictable for the voters, which is why...
Right. You want to establish a pattern.
Yeah.
Do you want to revise them or amend it?
Well, I think Tom is going to check to make sure that, in fact, we can do it that way.
Yeah.
So, the motion is good as stated?
I would say, yeah. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Number two, under new business, is discussion of possible revisions to Town Council rules in my haste to be succinct under Planning Matters Subcommittee Appointments. I've already talked about that, so enough said, and it'll come back before you win Number three, to discuss the request for a zone change from Residential C to Business for Parcel 27-1-154A, also known as 51 Prospect Street. The applicants are here. Please come forward to the table and identify yourselves for us.
Geraldine Sotcha with Sotcha Property Management, LLC.
Go ahead.
We bought this a number of years ago and operated it. We've had businesses ever since, going back, ever since the building was built. I see a picture of it. Does anybody want to pass it around? Just don't touch the front of it, because you'll lose it. It's never been a residence, and...
It's never been a residence, and I probably should have printed that out, but-
That's all right.
I think most of us have a sense of where, it's not too far-
It's right across from the church.
Exactly, off the Rotary-
Cabellos is currently in one of your tenants right now?
Yeah. Been there for 15, 20 years already.
Was that one of Graziano's building at one time?
No, that was a real estate office.
Edna Stevens.
Edna Stevens, real estate. They built that.
Okay, they were on Prospect Street.
It was approved in 1989, and they never changed that. Thank you.
So we're very much surprised to find out what we found out just two weeks ago.
Well, I'm guessing through the chair at this point in time, this is a matter that we'd want to refer to planning.
Right. Typically, when the council receives, uh, requests for zone changes or other matters pertaining to the zoning map, our protocol is to refer it to the planning board so that they can address it, because they are the, the body that has purview over the zoning map and all of the items that go with it. It doesn't strike me, and I'm not an expert by any means, that this will be too much of a stretch for the planning board to rectify for you.
We're going to have those tools to come here. Isn't the planning board the ones that pull the stuff?
Right, yes, you have to start here, by the way, because of the way the charter's written.
Okay.
Government, you come here, then we refer you back to the planning board.
Right.
And then ultimately, come back here.
And then you'll come back here.
Come back here, yeah. If you like it, I'll be there.
Yes, so if there's no other questions or discussion?
I propose a motion to refer a zone change request to parcel 27-154A-A, known as 51 Prospect Street, to the planning board for their review and public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So this, uh, Mr. Sotcha will go to the, directly to the planning board. Mr. Florence will alert the-
We'll contact you to let you know.
Planning department tomorrow.
Okay, there we go.
See you down the road.
Yeah.
Thank you. Again, it looks very straightforward, so I don't anticipate that you'll-
You would think logically, we sometimes-
Yeah, maybe I should, yeah, not saying that.
It's a commercial building forever, so.
Okay, yeah, logic and government sometimes.
Careful.
Public hearings, number nine. We are just a little bit past 6:30, so we can begin with the first public hearing this evening, the reversal of the liquor license transfer for Tao's Asian Cuisine from YTC Incorporated to MLY Incorporated. Do we have the petitioner here? Mr. Chen is not here, but Mr. Levine, Attorney Levine is here.
Good evening.
Before, I, I have to now start the actual protocol of the, the public hearing. The reason for the public hearing is to discuss the reversal of a liquor license transfer of ownership application for all alcohol for Tao's Asian Cuisine. Let me introduce the council members to my right, your left, Counselor Federici, Manley Hill, Kane, and Ford. The clerk will now read the legal notice into the record.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the general laws that MLY, MLY Incorporated, DBA Tao's Asian Cuisine wishes to reverse its liquor license transfer from YTC Inc., DBA Tao's Asian Cuisine, 31 Harkness Avenue, East Longmont, Massachusetts, to MLY Incorporated, DBA Tao's Asian Cuisine. The town council will hold a public hearing on the reversal of this license on Tuesday, October 9, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Council on Aging Meeting Room, 328 North Main Street, East Longmont, Massachusetts. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Okay, so Mr. Levine, on behalf of the petitioner, would you like to just fill in the blanks for the council?
Uh, well, the agreement did not come to fruition, unfortunately, and the part, uh, the license will have to revert back to YTC, uh, currently active, it's with MLY, but has never been used.
Okay, and per the ABCC, the, we moved to transfer that license back in July?
July 16th.
But since the, the sale did not go forward, it's now necessary to, uh, transfer the license back to the original owner at their request.
And from my understanding, the potential buyers turned in their license back to the city town, I believe.
That's what I'm understanding as well.
Right. I think as a matter of process, that would, once this goes through, that license will become null and void anyway, but that's, it's good that, that, um, original owner, proposed owner has already taken those steps. Is there any discussion from the public on this matter? Any conversation or discussion from the council? Okay, hearing none from either. Uh, the council will now take a vote to approve-
Excuse me, Cap, you just have to close the-
I'm sorry, you're right. Have to close the public hearing? These things are so technical.
So you need a motion for that?
Yeah. Uh, we have a motion to reverse the license.
You need a motion to reverse the hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, then.
I'd like to propose a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move? Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Thank you. And now we'll take a motion to actually go forward with-
I'll make a motion to approve a liquor license reversal from MLY Inc., DBA Tao's Asian Cuisine to YTC Inc., DBA Tao's Asian Cuisine.
Some move? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levine.
Thanks.
Oh, we're right on the dot here with the 6:40 hearing. Proposed local acceptance of MGL Chapter 40, Section 8J, that will establish an ADA commission, and this is a first reading. The purpose for this is to, let me get the right sheet here. And Mrs. Brennan and Ms. Menard will be speaking on behalf of this, this evening, yes?
Certainly.
Yes. So, um, the reason is to, for the first time, to, is to read for the first time a new proposed general bylaw to address a local acceptance that would establish an ADA commission in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8J. Tonight, Counselors Federici, Manley Hill, Kane, and Ford. And I will now open the public meeting and ask the clerk to read the notice into the record.
The East Longmont Town Council will hold the public hearing on Tuesday, October 9, 2018, at 6:40 PM in the meeting room at the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street, to address a proposed local acceptance of MGL Chapter 40, Section 8J, that will establish an ADA commission. Information relating to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thank you. Uh, so Carolyn or Denise?
Well, we're, we're kind of proposing this together. Um, it's, it's a need that we address ADA issues in, in town. I don't know, do you know, Carolyn, if there ever was an ADA commission?
There's not, uh-
Has not been?
The chapter was never officially adopted.
So that's, that's really the purpose of this. Carolyn has, she's a good grant writer, and she, um, took on, uh, looking at grants for our elevator. And one of the things that we, that will give us extra points is having an ADA commission adopting these, um, these rules. So, um, certainly, it's a good thing to have anyway, and just something that was never really addressed. So Carolyn can go into a little more detail, I think?
Yeah, so Denise was right, um, after she, we, she successfully got that grant submitted for a community development block grant, um, they received funding for the architectural plans for the elevator. However, that did not include the cost of building an elevator. So through some discussions with Massachusetts Office on Disability, there was another grant available, um, that would could, it was a capital, a grant to fund a capital accessibility structure, which, um, part of it, which would have raised, very, very competitive, would have raised our, our points, would have been to have had a commission established. The other issue, too, was the timeline wasn't perfect, but they're still next year. So one of the requirements was to have adopted this law. Um, so what you have before you is, there's two laws. Can I do them together?
Oh, no.
So there's Chapter 40, Section 8J, and there's Chapter 40, Section 22G. So the first one is to establish the, um, the disability commission. And I'm just going to read, actually write, from how it's written. "The commission shall, shall research local problems of people with disabilities, advise and assist municipal officials and employees in ensuring compliance with state and federal laws and regulations that affect people with disabilities. Coordinate or carry out programs designed to meet the problems of people with disabilities in coordination with programs of the Massachusetts Office on Disability. Review and make recommendations about policies, procedures, services, activities, and facilities of departments, boards, and agencies of said city or town as they affect people with disabilities. Provide information, referrals, guidance, and technical assistance to individuals, public agencies, businesses, and organizations in all matters pertaining to disability. Coordinate activities of other local groups organized for similar purposes." So that's, that, that's the first one in a nutshell. Um, the other-
It's a big nutshell.
Yeah, it is. So, um, what, the other thing that this is going to complement is our, um, we're working with Denise and Care One and Lisa, our nurse, on, um, making East Long Meadow an age and dementia-friendly community. This is going to work together and be a big asset to that. And, uh, sitting on the open space committee, we're revising that and updating it. Donna Prather from Recreation and I did a walkthrough of the outside part of East Long Meadow, and we really need some advocacy on making outside of East Long Meadow very accessible, because right now it's got some issues. Um, so I just, I did want to show you this before I go on to the second chapter. This is just a PowerPoint that Massachusetts Office of Disabilities presented, and it's just a summary of what other communities have done with this law and the next one that I'll talk to you about. But you can't look at it while I'm talking.
Thanks.
Does anybody else want to talk? I have two more. I have one more you guys can share. Anybody want? So the second, um, the second chapter, section, is 40, is chapter seven, chapter 40, section 22G, and that is to, um, allocate funds received from fines assessed for violations of handicap parking in East Long Meadow to the Commission on Disabilities. So what this is, 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 it's really up to the resources that the police department would have, would be if somebody was, um, parked in a handicapped, um, parking spot and were not handicapped, they could, um, fine them. And that would have to be established at some point. But the funds that were received could be used to help any kind of projects that this commission wanted to, to do to help some part of the town be more accessible.
Further discussion, questions?
Um, the only question I'd bring up, and it came up a while back, was, um, under council rules and orders, I believe it's under 5C, that, um, we asked to have a representative here, and we do have people here representing that cause. And, um, uh, you were going to bring up pros and cons, so obviously, these are all the con, uh, the pros of what we want to do. Are there, are there any cons at all? I would think maybe not with, um, Section 48J, but with 40, 22G, if, if those monies did not go back toward, um-
The commission.
The commission, where would they go?
This chapter says it has to go back to the commission. You wouldn't have a choice. If this was adopted, you wouldn't have a choice, would have to go back to the commission.
So is this something that comes back to maybe the full, a full council or a quorum and we vote on at some point in time?
The town manager actually has, uh, the discretion to do, um, to appoint the members, and, uh, once, I don't think so, once you give charge to this commission, but I can definitely look more into that, I want to-
Well, part one is to form the commission, correct?
Correct. Yes, there's two different, it's two different-
So there can't be any cons with, with forming a commission? I mean, that's pro.
I would not miss so.
We're all pro, and I'm, and I'm just trying to cover-
Absolutely.
We have a question for you.
This is public hearing.
Yes, it is. Mm-hmm. Yep, please come up. So we, it's, the meeting's recording, we need to be able to get your voice into the microphone.
Pat Henry, Ridge Road, East Long Meadow. Uh, two questions. Is MGL 40J 8, or 8J mandatory? Must we adopt it, or is this?
No, no.
This is, we're volunteering to do this.
Correct.
Therefore, once we accept it, my next question is, are there any drawbacks, as you say, Mike?
Yeah.
Or restrictions or additional costs that might also come to us as a result of adopting this, that we might wish next week, oh gee, we shouldn't have done this? Have you looked, have you looked at that?
The, the, the cost of having a police officer take the time to, uh-
Issue tickets.
Really, like, take a look and sit around town to do that, is up to the resources of the police department. If they don't have the financial resources to designate, make that during a certain time or whatever, that is totally up to them. It's really, if there was an, if there was ever a time where, in which they would try to fine somebody for parking in that spot, the money that came in would go to the commission.
But Pat, you're talking about, like, requiring us to do certain things.
Like if we-
Right.
Extreme effects.
If we identify an issue.
When we, when the commission identifies a deficiency, what's the obligation to fix that?
It's strictly advisory. It's strictly advisory. So we would advise the town, or possibly a business, that to make this more accessible, this would be our recommendation. We are strictly advisory. It's really up to this council to make those type of decisions to enforce.
Okay, I'm not used to seeing that from requirements of the state, but as long as we look at that, make sure we're all-
No, but it's a good-
One for the man.
Yeah, it's a good question, though, but I'm going to actually-
We'll, we'll look again.
There would never be a negative in there.
No, but I think it's a good question. So I'm going to talk to Jeffrey, who I've been speaking to at the Massachusetts Office of Disabilities, and just bring that up. I think that's a good question.
Just occurred to me.
Yeah, thank you.
And we do have a second reading.
Yes, we have a second reading, so this is-
I also have a point of order. Maybe wrong, but it seems to me that you're not, you don't require a vote to close the public hearing. Did you do that last?
No.
No.
We haven't done that before.
We've never done it.
It's here.
Somebody made you do it.
Well, yeah, I think you, I think you-
I do, yeah, it's in the protocol.
No, you, you close the public hearing.
Right.
You make the decision.
You don't need a motion to close the public hearing.
We did accord our-
Got it, got it.
Oh, you don't.
Oh, I can just close it.
Yeah.
I know you're going to close.
I believe that.
Yeah, we did, we did call for a motion there.
That's my, that's my fault. I thought I was covering you.
Well, it's covered now.
It's covered now, thank you, Mr. Henry.
Listen, more motions are better than less motions. Robert's rule of laws, he, you know.
Any further discussion or comments from the public? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. But we now have to-
We now have to read for the first time.
Read for the first time, so, Mr. Ford, I think it's yours.
It is not.
Oh, so you continue. Sorry.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion under 9B to continue the public hearing to a second reading to address a proposed local acceptance for Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8J, that will establish an ADA commission to October 23, 2018, at 7:00 PM.
Um, and that's the good news. The unfortunate news is, uh, the entire text has to be read into the record.
Is it an ADA commission or COD? Commission on Disabilities.
Well, we have-
What was your, I'm sorry, what was your question?
Is it ADA commission or a commission on disabilities?
It's a commission on disabilities.
So are we using the wrong-
Because it's ADA Americans with Disabilities Act, so this is actually a commission of disabilities.
Right.
We're not making a commission of the act, we're making a commission of-
Yeah, it says, it says right there, disability commission, right in the act.
So instead of ADA, we want to say-
COD.
Commission on Disabilities.
Okay, so how about if I, how about if I cancel that, cancel that motion and entertain a motion to say, we want to continue the public hearing to a second reading to address a proposed local acceptance for Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8J, that will establish a COD commission to October 23, 2018, at 7:00 PM.
And now the whole text, the whole text has to be read into the record.
Well, I have a question of procedure. If we noticed it as a public hearing for an ADA commission, I don't know that we can change the name of what was noticed officially without redoing the public hearing. Because we noticed it as an ADA commission, and it's...
The good news is, we have lots of time for the next grant.
Yeah, I can ask Jeffrey about that.
Yeah. So I suppose you can...
So on a technicality, Mr. Florence, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. If we...
I don't either.
Posted this incorrectly as ADA when it's really commission on disability, in fact, can we even go forward with this hearing? I would think...
We can't, probably, because it's not noticed properly.
Part two is correct.
Part two is correct.
We just err on the side of caution.
Yes, because...
There's no reason to rush.
No, there's...
Nope, not at this point.
Well, then, we will table this discussion until we can get it back on the agenda properly noted.
Noted.
Noted, yes. We do need a motion to set aside this matter until we have the right language.
Set aside this matter until our next meeting. I'll retract the motion that I put on the table, so...
Right.
And that goes for the second motion, obviously, the second part, too.
Yep.
Good catch.
So, all those in favor of...
You can be seconded.
Somebody's...
Second.
Yeah. Yep. All those in favor of setting aside this first reading on MGL Chapter 40, Section 8J, as well as the second one, MGL Chapter 40, Section 22G?
Second one is noticed correctly.
We can, all right.
It's noticed correctly.
I disagree with you both at the same time.
You can do 22Gs worded correctly.
It's worded...
Well, you'll be in the hearings.
Yeah.
You might as well. Do them both at the same time.
So just set aside everything to 6:30, to 6:40 and to 6:50, until our next meeting.
10:20, I think.
About time. They coincide with each other, so approving one and not the other, wouldn't get us...
No.
Yeah.
They're staggered, I mean. Because you have one first reading, and then one first reading, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're set aside.
That was...
It's like trying to untangle wet yarn.
Putting the toothpaste back in the tube.
That's right. And apologies to our viewing audience for all of that confusion. Sometimes the MGL pieces are a little technical and difficult to...
It was caused because...
It was that, because of that, right.
The language, I believe in the text is correct. And the language in the motion was now been corrected as well.
So, number 10, executive session. We have none listed for this evening. And number 11 is adjournment.
A motion adjourned.
Second.